Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Waterbury Board of Education Workshop at BW Tinker School. And if there's any students here tonight, I would love you to go and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Do I have any volunteers? Come on. If you would go up by the flag and lead us. Thank you.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. If you could please stay there, we're going to have a silent prayer. And if everybody could please keep in their prayers, the family of the young girl who was tragically killed this week. If we could keep her family and friends in our prayers. Thank you very much, students. They did a great job, right? Everybody? (applause) Okay. First on the agenda is Principal Lurs and her staff, and I guess we have some entertainment.
of Education, teachers, family, and other guests. Tonight, I would like to highlight some of our students' talents and share last year's growth in the area of math. First, to start the evening off, I would like to introduce some of Tinker School's talented 4th and 5th grade students, who will be performing a song with their ukuleles and singing on the direction of our music teacher, Ms. Kelly Farrell. Ms. Farrell is a first-year teacher, and she acquired the ukuleles by volunteering to
Okay.
(inaudible)
participate in a workshop this fall. (singing) Tashing through the snow in a one-horse open sleigh, o'er the fields we go, laughing all the way. The tom-tom bells ring, making spirits bright. What fun it is to laugh and sing a sleighing song tonight! Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! A day or two ago, I thought I'd take a ride, and soon Miss Dandy Bright was seated by my side. The horse must lean and wave, misfortune seemed his lot. We got into a drifted bank, and then we got shot! Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! A day or two ago, I thought I'd take a ride, and soon Miss Dandy Bright was seated by my side. The horse must lean and wave, misfortune seemed his lot. We got into a drifted bank, and then we got shot! Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! A day or two ago, I thought I'd take a ride, and soon Miss Dandy Bright was seated by my side. The horse must lean and wave, misfortune seemed his lot. We got into a drifted bank, and then we got shot! Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! A day or two ago, I thought I'd take a ride, and soon Miss Dandy Bright was seated by my side. The horse must lean and wave, misfortune seemed his lot. We got into a drifted bank, and then we got shot! Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! A day or two ago, I thought I'd take a ride, and soon Miss Dandy Bright was seated by my side. The horse must lean and wave, misfortune seemed his lot. We got into a drifted bank, and then we got shot! Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! A day or two ago, I thought I'd take a ride, and soon Miss Dandy Bright was seated by my side. The horse must lean and wave, misfortune seemed his lot. We got into a drifted bank, and then we got shot! Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! A day or two ago, I thought I'd take a ride, and soon Miss Dandy Bright was seated by my side. The horse must lean and wave, misfortune seemed his lot. We got into a drifted bank, and then we got shot! Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! A day or two ago, I thought I'd take a ride, and soon Miss Dandy Bright was seated by my side. The horse must lean and wave, misfortune seemed his lot. We got into a drifted bank, and then we got shot! Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! A day or two ago, I thought I'd take a ride, and soon Miss Dandy Bright was seated by my side. The horse must lean and wave, misfortune seemed his lot. We got into a drifted bank, and then we got shot! Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! A day or two ago, I thought I'd take a ride, and soon Miss Dandy Bright was seated by my side. The horse must lean and wave, misfortune seemed his lot. We got into a drifted bank, and then we got shot! Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! A day or two ago, I thought I'd take a ride, and soon Miss Dandy Bright was seated by my side. The horse must lean and wave, misfortune seemed his lot. We got into a drifted bank, and then we got shot! Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! A day or two ago, I thought I'd take a ride, and soon Miss Dandy Bright was seated by my side. The horse must lean and wave, misfortune seemed his lot. We got into a drifted bank, and then we got shot! Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! A day or two ago, I thought I'd take a ride, and soon Miss Dandy Bright was seated by my side. The horse must lean and wave, misfortune seemed his lot. We got into a drifted bank, and then we got shot! Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! A day or two ago, I thought I'd take a ride, and soon Miss Dandy Bright was seated by my side. The horse must lean and wave, misfortune seemed his lot. We got into a drifted bank, and then we got shot! Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! A day or two ago, I thought I'd take a ride, and soon Miss Dandy Bright was seated by my side. The horse must lean and wave, misfortune seemed his lot. We got into a drifted bank, and then we got shot! Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! A day or two ago, I thought I'd take a ride, and soon Miss Dandy Bright was seated by my side. The horse must lean and wave, misfortune seemed his lot. We got into a drifted bank, and then we got shot! Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! A day or two ago, I thought I'd take a ride, and soon Miss Dandy Bright was seated by my side. The horse must lean and wave, misfortune seemed his lot. We got into a drifted bank, and then we got shot! Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! A day or two ago, I thought I'd take a ride, and soon Miss Dandy Bright was seated by my side. The horse must lean and wave, misfortune seemed his lot. We got into a drifted bank, and then we got shot! Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! A day or two ago, I thought I'd take a ride, and soon Miss Dandy Bright was seated by my side. The horse must lean and wave, misfortune seemed his lot. We got into a drifted bank, and then we got shot! Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! A day or two ago, I thought I'd take a ride, and soon Miss Dandy Bright was seated by my side. The horse must lean and wave, misfortune seemed his lot. We got into a drifted bank, and then we got shot! Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! A day or two ago, I thought I'd take a ride, and soon Miss Dandy Bright was seated by my side. The horse must lean and wave, misfortune seemed his lot. We got into a drifted bank, and then we got shot! Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! A day or two ago, I thought I'd take a ride, and soon Miss Dandy Bright was seated by my side. The horse must lean and wave, misfortune seemed his lot. We got into a drifted bank, and then we got shot! Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! A day or two ago, I thought I'd take a ride, and soon Miss Dandy Bright was seated by my side. The horse must lean and wave, misfortune seemed his lot. We got into a drifted bank, and then we got shot! Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! A day or two ago, I thought I'd take a ride, and soon Miss Dandy Bright was seated by my side. The horse must lean and wave, misfortune seemed his lot. We got into a drifted bank, and then we got shot! Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! A day or two ago, I thought I'd take a ride, and soon Miss Dandy Bright was seated by my side. The horse must lean and wave, misfortune seemed his lot. We got into a drifted bank, and then we got shot! Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! A day or two ago, I thought I'd take a ride, and soon Miss Dandy Bright was seated by my side. The horse must lean and wave, misfortune seemed his lot. We got into a drifted bank, and then we got shot! Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! A day or two ago, I thought I'd take a ride, and soon Miss Dandy Bright was seated by my side. The horse must lean and wave, misfortune seemed his lot. We got into a drifted bank, and then we got shot! Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! A day or two ago, I thought I'd take a ride, and soon Miss Dandy Bright was seated by my side. The horse must lean and wave, misfortune seemed his lot. We got into a drifted bank, and then we got shot! Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! A day or two ago, I thought I'd take a ride, and soon Miss Dandy Bright was seated by my side. The horse must lean and wave, misfortune seemed his lot. We got into a drifted bank, and then we got shot! Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! A day or two ago, I thought I'd take a ride, and soon Miss Dandy Bright was seated by my side. The horse must lean and wave, misfortune seemed his lot. We got into a drifted bank, and then we got shot! Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! A day or two ago, I thought I'd take a ride, and soon Miss Dandy Bright was seated by my side. The horse must lean and wave, misfortune seemed his lot. We got into a drifted bank, and then we got shot! Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! A day or two ago, I thought I'd take a ride, and soon Miss Dandy Bright was seated by my side. The horse must lean and wave, misfortune seemed his lot. We got into a drifted bank, and then we got shot! Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! A day or two ago, I thought I'd take a ride, and soon Miss Dandy Bright was seated by my side. The horse must lean and wave, misfortune seemed his lot. We got into a drifted bank, and then we got shot! Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! A day or two ago, I thought I'd take a ride, and soon Miss Dandy Bright was seated by my side. The horse must lean and wave, misfortune seemed his lot. We got into a drifted bank, and then we got shot! Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! A day or two ago, I thought I'd take a ride, and soon Miss Dandy Bright was seated by my side. The horse must lean and wave, misfortune seemed his lot. We got into a drifted bank, and then we got shot! Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! A day or two ago, I thought I'd take a ride, and soon Miss Dandy Bright was seated by my side. The horse must lean and wave, misfortune seemed his lot. We got into a drifted bank, and then we got shot! Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! A day or two ago, I thought I'd take a ride, and soon Miss Dandy Bright was seated by my side. The horse must lean and wave, misfortune seemed his lot. We got into a drifted bank, and then we got shot! Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! A day or two ago, I thought I'd take a ride, and soon Miss Dandy Bright was seated by my side. The horse must lean and wave, misfortune seemed his lot. We got into a drifted bank, and then we got shot! Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! A day or two ago, I thought I'd take a ride, and soon Miss Dandy Bright was seated by my side. The horse must lean and wave, misfortune seemed his lot. We got into a drifted bank, and then we got shot! Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! A day or two ago, I thought I'd take a ride, and soon Miss Dandy Bright was seated by my side. The horse must lean and wave, misfortune seemed his lot. We got into a drifted bank, and then we got shot! Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! A day or two ago, I thought I'd take a ride, and soon Miss Dandy Bright was seated by my side. The horse must lean and wave, misfortune seemed his lot. We got into a drifted bank, and then we got shot! Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! A day or two ago, I thought I'd take a ride, and soon Miss Dandy Bright was seated by my side. The horse must lean and wave, misfortune seemed his lot. We got into a drifted bank, and then we got shot! Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! A day or two ago, I thought I'd take a ride, and soon Miss Dandy Bright was seated by my side. The horse must lean and wave, misfortune seemed his lot. We got into a drifted bank, and then we got shot! Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! A day or two ago, I thought I'd take a ride, and soon Miss Dandy Bright was seated by my side. The horse must lean and wave, misfortune seemed his lot. We got into a drifted bank, and then we got shot! Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! A day or two ago, I thought I'd take a ride, and soon Miss Dandy Bright was seated by my side. The horse must lean and wave, misfortune seemed his lot. We got into a drifted bank, and then we got shot! Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! A day or two ago, I thought I'd take a ride, and soon Miss Dandy Bright was seated by my side. The horse must lean and wave, misfortune seemed his lot. We got into a drifted bank, and then we got shot! Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! A day or two ago, I thought I'd take a ride, and soon Miss Dandy Bright was seated by my side. The horse must lean and wave, misfortune seemed his lot. We got into a drifted bank, and then we got shot! Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! A day or two ago, I thought I'd take a ride, and soon Miss Dandy Bright was seated by my side. The horse must lean and wave, misfortune seemed his lot. We got into a drifted bank, and then we got shot! Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! A day or two ago, I thought I'd take a ride, and soon Miss Dandy Bright was seated by my side. The horse must lean and wave, misfortune seemed his lot. We got into a drifted bank, and then we got shot! Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! A day or two ago, I thought I'd take a ride, and soon Miss Dandy Bright was seated by my side. The horse must lean and wave, misfortune seemed his lot. We got into a drifted bank, and then we got shot! Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! A day or two ago, I thought I'd take a ride, and soon Miss Dandy Bright was seated by my side. The horse must lean and wave, misfortune seemed his lot. We got into a drifted bank, and then we got shot! Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! A day or two ago, I thought I'd take a ride, and soon Miss Dandy Bright was seated by my side. The horse must lean and wave, misfortune seemed his lot. We got into a drifted bank, and then we got shot! Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! A day or two ago, I thought I'd take a ride, and soon Miss Dandy Bright was seated by my side. The horse must lean and wave, misfortune seemed his lot. We got into a drifted bank, and then we got shot! Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! A day or two ago, I thought I'd take a ride, and soon Miss Dandy Bright was seated by my side. The horse must lean and wave, misfortune seemed his lot. We got into a drifted bank, and then we got shot! Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! A day or two ago, I thought I'd take a ride, and soon Miss Dandy Bright was seated by my side. The horse must lean and wave, misfortune seemed his lot. We got into a drifted bank, and then we got shot! Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! A day or two ago, I thought I'd take a ride, and soon Miss Dandy Bright was seated by my side. The horse must lean and wave, misfortune seemed his lot. We got into a drifted bank, and then we got shot! Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! A day or two ago, I thought I'd take a ride, and soon Miss Dandy Bright was seated by my side. The horse must lean and wave, misfortune seemed his lot. We got into a drifted bank, and then we got shot! Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! A day or two ago, I thought I'd take a ride, and soon Miss Dandy Bright was seated by my side. The horse must lean and wave, misfortune seemed his lot. We got into a drifted bank, and then we got shot! Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! A day or two ago, I thought I'd take a ride, and soon Miss Dandy Bright was seated by my side. The horse must lean and wave, misfortune seemed his lot. We got into a drifted bank, and then we got shot! Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! A day or two ago, I thought I'd take a ride, and soon Miss Dandy Bright was seated by my side. The horse must lean and wave, misfortune seemed his lot. We got into a drifted bank, and then we got shot! Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! A day or two ago, I thought I'd take a ride, and soon Miss Dandy Bright was seated by my side. The horse must lean and wave, misfortune seemed his lot. We got into a drifted bank, and then we got shot! Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! A day or two ago, I thought I'd take a ride, and soon Miss Dandy Bright was seated by my side. The horse must lean and wave, misfortune seemed his lot. We got into a drifted bank, and then we got shot! Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! A day or two ago, I thought I'd take a ride, and soon Miss Dandy Bright was seated by my side. The horse must lean and wave, misfortune seemed his lot. We got into a drifted bank, and then we got shot! Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! A day or two ago, I thought I'd take a ride, and soon Miss Dandy Bright was seated by my side. The horse must lean and wave, misfortune seemed his lot. We got into a drifted bank, and then we got shot! Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! A day or two ago, I thought I'd take a ride, and soon Miss Dandy Bright was seated by my side. The horse must lean and wave, misfortune seemed his lot. We got into a drifted bank, and then we got shot! Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! A day or two ago, I thought I'd take a ride, and soon Miss Dandy Bright was seated by my side. The horse must lean and wave, misfortune seemed his lot. We got into a drifted bank, and then we got shot! Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! A day or two ago, I thought I'd take a ride, and soon Miss Dandy Bright was seated by my side. The horse must lean and wave, misfortune seemed his lot. We got into a drifted bank, and then we got shot! Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! A day or two ago, I thought I'd take a ride, and soon Miss Dandy Bright was seated by my side. The horse must lean and wave, misfortune seemed his lot. We got into a drifted bank, and then we got shot! Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! A day or two ago, I thought I'd take a ride, and soon Miss Dandy Bright was seated by my side. The horse must lean and wave, misfortune seemed his lot. We got into a drifted bank, and then we got shot! Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! A day or two ago, I thought I'd take a ride, and soon Miss Dandy Bright was seated by my side. The horse must lean and wave, misfortune seemed his lot. We got into a drifted bank, and then we got shot! Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! A day or two ago, I thought I'd take a ride, and soon Miss Dandy Bright was seated by my side. The horse must lean and wave, misfortune seemed his lot. We got into a drifted bank, and then we got shot! Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! A day or two ago, I thought I'd take a ride, and soon Miss Dandy Bright was seated by my side. The horse must lean and wave, misfortune seemed his lot. We got into a drifted bank, and then we got shot! Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! A day or two ago, I thought I'd take a ride, and soon Miss Dandy Bright was seated by my side. The horse must lean and wave, misfortune seemed his lot. We got into a drifted bank, and then we got shot! Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! A day or two ago, I thought I'd take a ride, and soon Miss Dandy Bright was seated by my side. The horse must lean and wave, misfortune seemed his lot. We got into a drifted bank, and then we got shot! Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! A day or two ago, I thought I'd take a ride, and soon Miss Dandy Bright was seated by my side. The horse must lean and wave, misfortune seemed his lot. We got into a drifted bank, and then we got shot! Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! A day or two ago, I thought I'd take a ride, and soon Miss Dandy Bright was seated by my side. The horse must lean and wave, misfortune seemed his lot. We got into a drifted bank, and then we got shot! Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! A day or two ago, I thought I'd take a ride, and soon Miss Dandy Bright was seated by my side. The horse must lean and wave, misfortune seemed his lot. We got into a drifted bank, and then we got shot! Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! A day or two ago, I thought I'd take a ride, and soon Miss Dandy Bright was seated by my side. The horse must lean and wave, misfortune seemed his lot. We got into a drifted bank, and then we got shot! Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way! Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh! A day or two ago, I thought I'd take a ride, and soon Miss Dandy Bright was seated by my[694.12]
But as I have watched the CMTs be replaced by the Smarter Balance Test, and all kinds of other tests come into existence, and watch those test scores plummet, really in the last four or five years since we've been doing the Smarter Balance Test. To say our test scores are in the basement is a misnomer, because our test scores are really in the sub-basement. So it's encouraging to see those numbers increase in terms of the number of kids that are becoming more proficient, and I do sincerely hope that that will translate into the Smarter Balance portion of the test. A 6% growth is good. I haven't seen the latest test results from the Smarter Balance Test to compare them to the previous years, and 6% is significant. So in going forward, I applaud you and hope that this translates in not only better learning for our student body, but better scores overall on our standardized test. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate all you do.
Have a great evening. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is public speaking. I believe the first person on the list is Danielle Albert.
Good evening.
Hi, everyone. One of my biggest concerns in the district over the years has been parent engagement, and although there have been strides forward, there's always room for improvement. After last year's Parent Leadership Conference sponsored by Deepak, I came to the podium and suggested the district get its experts together to specifically address helping us help our children with what they're learning. That happened. Mr. Strand created four workshop forums and then put together a parent curriculum task force. It was a different approach to help engage parents. An administrator considered parent suggestions to try to improve the quality of our children's learning experience by actually engaging us, the parents. This started a long-needed open dialogue with parents, and it must be kept going. We have many small engagement pods working independently throughout the district. We have the FACE Center, parent-teacher groups, the Board of Ed ad hoc parent engagement committee, the parent curriculum task force, school governance councils, and Deepak. I believe there was also mention of school-family partnership action teams, but those I haven't seen. Speaking directly about school governance councils, it is very encouraging that Mr. Henry has initiated the incorporation of SGCs into all of our schools. There was an SGC training last Tuesday evening at Crosby led by Mr. Strand. It engaged the parents and community with material that was relevant to our children's school experience. It's time this district starts to review what SGCs and other cities are working on and possibly begin to collaborate in order to get our councils operating true or to their intended purpose. It's time to streamline the focus of all of these small pods, get these committees working collaboratively and not replicating efforts in isolation, as many of the same individuals participating in the same committees are all for the same purpose, to engage parents and the community in a way to help enhance the educational experience of our children. The district may want to consider using the Deepak to be the main umbrella under which some of these committees fall, each working on their own components, non-repetitive with closer oversight. Positive momentum has begun with the workshops and the SGC training, but it's only a start. Continue to offer the workshop forums. Parents will come if they see a specific purpose and goal and follow-through. Utilize this 21st century learning concept. Bring it down to the level of a parent, and I'll be the first to admit, I rolled my eyes and initially thought this 21st century stuff was slightly over the top, but it's not. It's completely in line with where our children's futures are going. Contemporary learning is very different from when most of us attended school. I know my daughters are not going to reach their full potential being taught in the same cookie-cutter manner. The mindset and approach to our children's learning has got to be changed, and we are all part of that process. The district has to help support it by making it relatable and understandable to parents. My girls come home, they talk about things like iReady, Lexia, extra math, Duolingo, Readworks. Do you think most of us know what those things are and the actual importance that they have? I know we heard about iReady just now. Partnerships need to be formed in regard to our children's learning, as unconventional or out-of-the-box as they might be. What's going on now is not working, and the test scores show it. I've been coming here for many years, and this past October was the first time parents have heard anything about curriculum development. Many of you have been on this board for over a decade, and the ELA curriculum was just finalized? That's where the focus needs to be, on learning, curriculum, and test scores, and the partnerships with families that must happen in order to help our children learn to their full potential. All of the resources are right here, they just need to be streamlined better and supported. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I have been extremely blessed to be a community member as Commissioner on the Board of Health on the Gil Martin School Governance Council. With this said, I recently attended the Learning in the 21st Century presentation at Crosby. It seemed like yesterday when I attended 20th Century education workshops and I was a student. I was extremely impressed with having an education background in curriculum at how Mr. Strand spoke to the numerous parents and educators. The interaction between those that came in response to deep-thinking questions relating to what our students are learning and how they should be learning was extremely hopeful, in that if, at every chance possible, we can continue this type of dialogue, and every person that came brought another person, the bridge between downtown, parents, and guardians would become more trusting and stable. Our children in Waterbury are not robots. They do not all learn in the same manner, and this was explained by engaging with us that out-of-the-box ideas was a way many children can learn, and has been shown to actually work with statistics. These strategies should be encouraged. Teachers should be allowed to teach with the ways that will grab students' minds and light up that bulb over their head with excitement. Little ones should not be sitting seven to eight hours a day when their minds are not fully grown until many grades later. Statistics have shown that movement within a school day keeps their minds alert and fresh. One short recess a day only shows that our students, all ages, end up tired and unable to absorb all that is thrown at them narratively. I commend Mr. Strand's dedication. I look forward to hearing how he encourages teachers to put into place without feeling that they can't, an out-of-the-box curriculum of ideas to engage our students into a world of knowledge that can be an adventure, not boredom. Then maybe, with hope, our scores will slowly climb out of the abyss. I want to thank you all, those involved, for a wonderful evening at Crosby, and I look forward to bringing more parents to the next forum by the School Governance Council.
Thank you.
To the Honorable Mayor Neil O'Leary, in his absence, to President Brown, Vice President Harvey, the entire Board of Education Commissioners, and Deputy Superintendent Henry, and to all the members of the Board of Education, I want to thank you for allowing me this opportunity to speak to you this evening. I am a substitute for the Waterbury Public School Systems. That's another one of my jobs. Most of my substitute teaching has been at the high school level. Upon my first week, I was greeted by a teacher who said, "Welcome to the jungle." I knew that this teacher in no way was referring to the students or staff as animals, but she was speaking of a situation or a place of bewildering, complexity, confusion, complication, and sometimes chaos. You see, it had not been my first time as a substitute teacher. The first time I was at that particular place was in 2016, when I was asked to cover in-school suspension. I soon discovered that in-school suspension was a popular place. The students that were not in in-school suspension desired to be there. So at the end of each class, students would run there to see their friends, and they'd try to hang out in there, and when spoken to, would become verbally abusive. Not much has changed. They have very caring staff. You have excellent teachers, excellent staff members that love what they're doing, that love the students. They value the students. They want to see the students win. They would much rather see the students in-school than out of school. That was the whole reason for in-school suspension. However, they come there, oh, they don't have any work to do. They have their cellphones in their hands, their earphones and their headphones in their ears, and their hoodies on their heads. ISS needs to be reexamined. Classroom behavior is disturbing with or without their regular teacher. Some classrooms have parrots, teachers, other people who assist, substitutes. Students are asked to have a seat, they sit on their desk. You have to be specific and say, "Sit in a chair." They're asked to settle down, and an attempt is made to provide them with the lesson, but many of them act as if the teacher is not even talking. Just want to check this. They use expletives. They use the N-word. They say other things. They say, "N-word, you're gay" to people. This is what's going on. The teachers have a very hard time teaching their lesson because of this. Who gives Rob those few students that come to learn? There was a time not too long ago when I was covering the class, and the students were a little unsettled, and I saw this one young lady, and I just looked at her face, and she just had a face of despair, because she really wanted to learn, but she couldn't. So I saw her going to the bathroom one day, and I was covering that part of the school, and I said, "Do you talk to your parents about what goes on?" And she said, "Yes." Now, I don't know if those parents have come in, but we need to get more parent engagement, because it's not fair to the people, to the students that come to learn, but they can't learn because of the disruptive behavior that is going on in your schools. Safety concerns, and I know I got to go. Do we know if every person that says they're students are really students at our schools? How do we know that? How do you track that? How do you know? They're literally walking around, some of them, all day. They're sent somewhere, the behavior technicians try to get them to go to their class. They run away when they're approached, some of them. Some of them weren't asked to stop, to show a pass, they don't stop. The behavior technicians and the teachers that perform hall duty are told to shut the F up, do other things. And the teachers in school are told the same thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak who did not have a chance to sign up? Thank you very much. We have about 15 minutes.
Okay.
Give or take 20.
Yes.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Mr. Morgan.
Thank you for allowing us to be here tonight. I believe you know everybody, but we'll introduce ourselves. My name is Scott Morgan, I'm the Director of Human Resources for the City of Waterbury, Civil Service.
Johanna Hayes, Callahan Professional Development Supervisor, School System.
Sheri Lamb, Senior HR Generalist, Civil Service.
Bob Brinker.
The reason why we're here today is that, if you go to Slide 2 for me, thank you, Norine, we appreciate your help. Basically, the reason why we're here today is we put a request for a proposal on the street, and we, in an attempt to seek a qualified consultant who could assist us in conducting a search to replace Dr. Willett, our Superintendent of Schools. And the goal was, and I've been in human resources for a long time, and I'm a firm believer of this, if you cast a wide net and you have a fair and objective and a competitive process, that you'll be able to attract a diverse number of highly qualified applicants to choose from in a variety of positions. I've been in human resources for over 40 years, I believe in it, and I think what we're trying to do today is, the mayor asked me to make sure we came today, we came to the Board of Education, we were transparent about what we were doing, and we're providing you information on where we are in the process for a search for a new superintendent. So basically, the underpinnings of all of this is that we're looking for a number of highly qualified applicants who can successfully lead an urban multicultural school system. That's what we're looking for, that's the goal. When we sent out the RFP, the first thing in the RFP is we outlined the demographics of our student population, because we wanted the vendors to know, and I think most of them do know, but we wanted it to be out there, right up front, this is our student population. So that's why I'm sharing this particular slide, is this was right at the beginning of our RFP. We want to make sure that the vendors were fully aware of what our student population is, and I know you all know it, but we wanted to make sure that anybody who was going to submit a proposal also was very understanding of not only a population, but the numbers and types of schools that we had. We originally went out in July, and we put a request for a proposal on the street, we left it up for four weeks, we received two submissions. So what we had to do is close it, we had two companies, ATS and Ray and Associates. So the mayor said, and we talked to Rocco also, our purchasing director, by city ordinance, we really should have a minimum of three people, to the extent that we can get three people, to submit proposals. So we went back out on the street for six more weeks, and we were able to attract additional vendors to submit proposals, and they are CAE, CES, HYA, and Ray and Associates. We set up a review, once the submission, once the proposal period closed, we set up a review committee, and you can see who the members are, Elizabeth Brown, Bob, Johanna, Sheri, and myself. When we originally met, Elizabeth Brown had to recuse herself because she had an affiliation with one of the vendors, and I'm almost guessing that maybe, probably anybody on the board may have had to do the same thing because of the close connection, I'm not sure. But we asked Liz to help us, and she initially had to tell us that she had a connection, so she recused herself. So we continued as a committee. We have a lot of experience, human resources, and education with Johanna's help in terms of conducting an assessment. And basically, what we tried to do is come up with the most important, critical items that we wanted to look at to assess, and we created a scoring rubric to be able to fairly and objectively assess the proposals. And the elements that we looked at are listed, years of experience, the scope of their business, are they local, are they regional, are they national? Where did they take their business? Is it all in Connecticut? Is it all out of Connecticut? Is it, where is it? We wanted to look at that, because we thought both were important. We thought that experience in Connecticut was important, so we were going to give credit for that, but we also thought that a more broader perspective was also important, so we included criteria for those. We also looked at, we had four proposals, all of them gave us their key associates, those people who are within the company that will be working on the project or may be used as experts, subject matter experts during the process. We also looked at the quality of their presentation, their ability to have a Connecticut presence, and one of the important things that we looked at is how much experience do they have in large urban districts? We want to make sure that they're fully experienced to be able to handle what we want them to handle. And we also looked at some other things. In their submissions, they had to make certain disclosures, there weren't any negative disclosures from any of them, but these are the elements that we looked at and we assessed. So we thought that they were critical elements, they were important to the success of selecting a school superintendent. So I'm sharing this information with you, again, to be transparent, to let you know what we did, and I don't have the individual breakdowns of the scores, but as you can see, along the top, we have CAE with the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education out of Weathersfield, Cooperative Education Services out of Trumbull, Hazard, Young, Attia, and Associates. They are present in Schaumburg, Illinois, and Jersey City, New Jersey, and Ray and Associates has presence in Cedar Rapids, Iowa, that's their headquarters, and Lakewood, New Jersey. And then each of us had a rubric, we independently assessed the vendors, and we unanimously came up with one vendor being top, ahead above everybody else. So we had the breakdown by proposal and by the person that did the assessments, you can see the scores, CAE, CES, the average CES, Hazard and Young, and Ray and Associates, and their consulting fees. So these are the things that we looked at, this is the result of our assessment. So basically, our recommendation is that we go with Ray and Associates, and if any of the committee members here want to chime in, we all had our own little ways that we viewed some of the information that was provided, but Ray and Associates has 42 years of experience, they have affiliations with NSBA and AASA, their key associates, their list of key associates was wonderful. They had people on their staff that they have access to, very diverse population of key associates with a lot of experience and a lot of credentials. Not to take anything away from anybody else, but they were just ahead above. They have extensive, large urban experience. Nobody came close. And just to show you the extent of their experience, literally, if you look down on the left side, from Alaska to Hawaii, from California to DC, from Florida to New Hampshire, and Washington State. They've also done work in Bridgeport, Greenwich, and Hartford, and as far as large urban city superintendent searches, Baltimore, Cincinnati, Detroit, Fort Worth, Kansas City, and Phoenix. There was nobody that could compete with those credentials, nobody. The local talent was good, they were good, but we thought that this was great. We thought this company had all the credentials and all of the things their experience pointed to us that they were the ones for the job. That's our recommendation. I've also included a timeline, I'm going to say this timeline is a little aggressive, okay, but I'd rather be a little aggressive than drag this out and maybe, you know, have it even go beyond something that might, you know, we want to do this as soon as possible, so this is an aggressive timeline, and the way basically it works is today we're doing a workshop, I'd like to hear your feedback tonight. We haven't notified Rocco yet of that we've made the final selection, but we will do that tomorrow. We want to hear, what's that? Yeah, we want to get your feedback too tonight. We're expecting that the vendor will conduct a job analysis, and that will include contacting all of the major stakeholders, the city administration, the Board of Education, the community, district staff, and they'll do it in a variety of ways. They'll do it through Skype, they'll do it on the internet with surveys, they'll come up and do face-to-face meetings. So we'll have a number of different mediums that we'll use, so that they, we want them to know what we want in a superintendent, and then we'll have an opportunity to give them that feedback. Once they've gathered all that information, they'll actually look at the existing job description, and if we have to make any changes, they'll make recommendations which have to be approved by both the Civil Service Commission, since this is filled through the Civil Service process, and the Board of Education. So we may have to have a special meeting at some point to do that, to speed it along. Once that's finalized, we'll also do a, they'll also do a salary survey and make a recommendation for salary. Post the vacancy, there's an appeal period of anybody who's not qualified, it's a civil service issue that if anybody we deem not qualified, they can appeal that. And then basically, they'll rank the top 12 candidates, we'll conduct an oral panel exam, and the panelists who will rate those applicants will not be from the district, they'll be from outside the district, and what'll happen is they'll set a list in score order, which includes, according to Civil Service rules and regulations, veterans' preference and residency points, and the top five names will come to the board for final interview and selection. And just as some follow-up, as far as the vendor that we're recommending, after the selection in their RFP, they stated that they will conduct a self-assessment with the board, focusing on future planning for the superintendent, and they'll also follow up approximately six months after the superintendent is selected, and once a year, every year after that, as long as the superintendent is in place in Waterbury. Johanna, anything?
I think Scott touched on this a little bit, but the one thing that's really stood out for me about this vendor was the extensive list of professional associates and organizations. I mean, everything from the National Hispanic Coalition to the Urban League to professional associations, so it really, I thought, spoke to the diversity of this city, and I was trying to make sure that whoever we selected was somebody who understood, you know, the population here in Waterbury, and these were people with years of high-level experience with very specific groups of people. So, you know, the team was very impressive, like, pretty much, I'm thinking of organizations that are prominent in education, and they had representatives from some of the top organizations, so that really stood out for me, and it wasn't just academic affiliations, it was social organizations, community organizations. So that was one of the things that really stood out for me with this group that I thought would be the most beneficial here in Waterbury.
Get questions?
Commissioner Sweeney.
Scott, can we go back to your timeline for a second?
Sure.
So, I'm not sure exactly if it needs to be in your time, but it most certainly, Madam President, needs to be in ours. We are required by state law to notify the state of the existence of a search committee that in general, throughout Connecticut, usually is the Board of Education. I don't see that in this timeline here, and it certainly needs to be done. So there has to be a vote of this board to appoint itself as a search committee, and that has to be noticed to the state. That's a requirement.
This is, I'm not aware of that, I could check with our legal department?
Better check. Because that has to be done.
Okay.
We'll check into it, but my understanding is that we are unique in Waterbury because it is a civil service position.
Right.
So it's not a Board of Ed position, so it's a collaboration, obviously, but the... So it's a collaboration, obviously, but the responsibility by our city charter is through the civil service. I believe that's my understanding.
Madam Chair, the, the, by state statute, the hiring of the superintendent is the responsibility of the Board of Education. And the Board of Education has got to notify the state of the existence of a, of a search committee. And whether that is a committee other than this board, or this board, it has to be done, it has to be voted on, and it has to be noticed to the state of Connecticut.
All right. I think what we can do is tomorrow, we can meet with Attorney Whitby and get her, her advice. And if that is the case, then we have a meeting scheduled for the 21st, which I think would fit in with the timeline, and we can provide a vote at that point. But I'd like to get her legal opinion on the matter.
Agreed.
I'm not doubting whether it's right or wrong, or whether it's civil service or not. Just, let's get it up front and above board, and we'll get her opinion, and we'll notice all of you about it.
Okay. Commissioner Stango, and then Commissioner Hernandez. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Mr. Morgan, I, I know you realize that Waterbury is one of the one or two of the only districts in the, in the country who use civil service for their superintendent search. That's, so I'm wondering that, in the discussions that you had, or anyone of your panel had, with the various companies who put in with the RFP, I wonder if anyone said, mentioned to you or in discussions said anything about that, it may be difficult finding superintendent candidates because of the civil service requirement? Did anyone talk about that?
No.
At this level?
No.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Commissioner Hernandez, I apologize.
Thank you.
My question is, in the beginning, there were only two. Ray and ATS? ATY? What happened to AT?
They did not reapply. You have to apply during the open window. They did not reapply.
Oh, so they didn't reapply?
They did not reapply.
Did they give you any reason as to why they wouldn't?
We contacted them and told them that it was open again, and they did not reapply. I, I, they gave no reason why or why not.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Therryault.
Yeah, I'd like to concur with Commissioner Stango's remarks. In the past, we have gotten several complaints when we went out to find a superintendent that the civil service process was very tedious. And this is my first time meeting you, Mr. Morgan, and I'm very impressed with your expertise in your committee and the work you've done for the city. My question would be, and I guess it's a rhetorical question, not necessarily to be answered, but as we go forward, I just don't want to see any bait-and-switch kind of things with regard to the doctorate, non-doctorate. You know, every time we go out and we search for a superintendent, we say, we must have the doctorate. And then all of a sudden, I can remember 20 years ago, the doctorate requirement was dropped. I'm assuming the doctorate requirement will be sustained with the search for the new superintendent, and there'll be no bait-and-switch kinds of things as we go forward. I know the Board of Education and the committee may determine the requirements, and I'd certainly not want to see that doctorate requirement put aside. Nor would I want, also, I'd like to see extensive urban experience. As you can see from the speaker that spoke tonight, we've got a lot of work to do on that department, too. So we need somebody that can step, step up to the plate and really understand the complexities of urban education, give the confidence and the support to our principals and administrators. And we certainly need to change some of the things that are, we are experiencing within our schools right now. But thank you for all your effort and your concern. Thank you.
You're welcome. Can I respond to that? I use the term job analysis, sort of a generic term that we use in the HR field. We do it with all of our jobs. But those are the things, based on the feedback from you and the community and the district personnel and the administration, they'll take all those things into consideration. And based on all your feedback, they'll come up with a recommendation for what a, a job description would look like. And the job description actually becomes the job posting. So all of those things, the requirements and the knowledge, skills and abilities, the work experience, the educational experience, all comes out in the job analysis. Thank you. You're welcome.
Vice President Harvey.
First of all, hello, everyone. I want to thank you for all the work that you've done in this process. Now, I just want to make sure, because I couldn't really see the, the slide there. The name of the person that you are recommending is, is Ray and Associates?
Ray and Associates, yes.
And you said 42 years?
Forty-two years.
Okay. And has Ray and Associates, in, have they been in the state? I mean, has anyone recommended them statewide?
Well, they've, they've done work in Bridgeport, Hartford and Greenwich.
How recently?
Within the, we asked them to submit their work on superintendent searches for the past three years.
Okay, good.
So it's rather recent.
All right. Okay. One, one thing, I, I know it will probably come up, you know, you know, focus groups, whatever we're going to do. But I, I had a very strong request from parents that they be involved in some part of this process. So, you know, I know we, we have our stakeholders, that the parents are stakeholders as well. And obviously, I know, Johanna, I think you mentioned Hispanic Coalition, Urban League. What about the NAACP?
Yeah, actually, they have some with the National.
Speak, speak into the mic, please.
One of the associates was a national president or vice president. It was a, but that was one of the organizations that was also listed in. I'm kind of trying to recall, but that was...
They were, they were associated with the National Alliance of Black Schools Administrators.
Good.
Along with the Association of Latino Administrators and Superintendents. Very diverse.
All right. Are they familiar with Waterbury?
They're very, they're, they're familiar with Waterbury and urban, larger urban communities settings.
Okay. So, I mean, what I mean is, are they, do they know about Waterbury and what we're looking for?
Well, that'll be part of their, their job analysis, is to become familiar
Okay.
With Waterbury, to find out, you know, those things that they need to know to be able to help, again, put together a, a job description, a recommended salary.
Right.
And then the requirements for the position.
All right. The, the communities are waiting with bated breath.
There will be...
Let's get going with this.
There, there will be an opportunity for community to provide input.
Very good. Now, give me again roughly your timeline, what you're considering, as far as the timeline.
Well, we would like to get...
Starting from, okay, so you presented tonight. So what's the next step?
We will, well, what we need to do is award the bid, notify the vendor, and then had to have them start to conduct their job analysis, where they would start reaching out and touching base with all the major stakeholders. The board, the administration, the community, district staff, so that they can, so that they can get input and feedback on what we are specifically looking for for a superintendent in Waterbury.
Very good. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So we look, we'll look, oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Stango.
Thank you. Mr. Morgan, will the board receive a copy of this PowerPoint?
I, I haven't planned to do that, but if you'd like one, I'm sure we could share that with you.
I just say that because you had some points there.
Yeah.
You had the timeline.
Mm-hmm. I said the ti, the timeline is aggressive.
I think, I see that, yes.
Because I want, I want to create a sense of urgency, that we want to get this done.
Right, right.
That would be, that would be great. I think we would like to see that. Commissioner Therryault?
Yeah, it's, it's good to have diversity in terms of National Coalition of different organizations, black organizations and Hispanic organizations. I am assuming, of course, we are going to pick the most qualified candidate, regardless of race, color or religion. The best qualified candidate. I don't care who that candidate is. When you stack them up and you evaluate them, that's the person to pick. The best qualified candidate. Thank you.
Agreed. So we'll look forward to your information about Commissioner Sweeney's concern about the legal status of notification to SDE. Get that information to us, and hopefully we can expedite the process. Thank you all very much.
I just want to, that's why we all used a rubric and went down a very specific list of, only one part of it was associations. It was, you know, experience, background, business scope. So all of those things, and we all did it separately and put our scores. And then those scores were collected and put on that spreadsheet. And that one company stood out overwhelmingly with, just based on the rubric qualifications. So always, the most qualified person.
Through the chair. I, no, I don't have any problem with your selection process of the people. I just wanted to make it quite clear, when you were selecting the superintendent, that, you know, all these factors that play in, in the end game, the most qualified, competent candidate. That's what I want. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate you giving us the opportunity to share this information with you.
Look forward to a successful campaign search. I'm in the campaign mode. Next on the list is number three, Ms. Kasumi Kamashita Iverson.
Oh, yes.
And I think we've seen this before.
Yes.
And we really appreciate your energy and dedication to continue going for this opportunity.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much for having me tonight. I would like to get an approval to apply for Japanese Language Exchange Program. It's called JLEAP. And JLEAP is funded by the Japan Foundation and the Russian Institute. And if we are accepted for the JLEAP, we will have an assistant teacher from Japan up to two years. The reason I would like to get an approval is that we will receive $1,000 stipend per year. This doesn't cost the city of Waterbury anything. And we have, so it's, we just get the money from the Japan Foundation. We have had three assistants in the past, and Maroni staff, students and families, everybody gave us a positive feedback, and we would like to have another one. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Any questions?
Great.
Thank you very much. Look forward to it. Okay. Next is our monthly expenditure report from Doreen Biola.
Hello. Hi, everyone.
Hi, Doreen.
So this is just, again, a snapshot. We are in the fourth month of the fiscal year. Again, paying close attention to our most crucial accounts, which would be salaries, utilities, tuition, transportation. You know, right now, we're maintaining what we need to maintain, closely watching the expenditures, the high, you know, our, our hiring process, making sure we're following all protocol, and making sure that the cuts that you had approved are still being intact. So we're watching, making sure that certain positions are still going through process. And the ones that we have frozen will stay frozen, and the ones we cut will remain cut. So you're just going to see in a projection in the salary line, I'm projecting us to go into the red. And that is because when we went through this budget process last year to adopt this budget, we know that we were going to have to go in and use the contingency accounts. So as you see below on the, on the last page, the other additional funding, you'll see that I will offset that deficit currently by using one of the contingency accounts. I think we're at a point where we're going to have to start to use these contingency accounts. We will not have probably the luxury of having the balance that we had in some of these to offset budgets going forward. So I just kind of want to make you aware of that. Any questions?
I had a question in terms of the state budget that was finally passed. Where are we with that? Any, any huge deficits from what we anticipated? Or were we, were we funded at the levels we thought we were going to be funded?
Well, once the state budget did get approved and adopted, we did receive notification that there may be additional cuts to ECS. It looked like Waterbury would get an additional cut of another $250,000. But that looks like it would be in the part of ECS that we get in the alliance form. So, again, we have not had, we have not applied for the alliance grant because the state has not sent us the information yet, because I think they're finalizing that number for the alliance piece. But I think the $250,000 will be going to the alliance piece.
An additional cut in the alliance.
So we have to kind of prepare for that then.
Yeah. I mean, and they're, they're looking at some of the other grants, too, that there could be possible additional cuts. But we have already taken that into account, because until we get the final award from the state, we are being very cautious, and we have already prepared to have cuts. So, you know, we, we kind of put 10% cuts in. So if it comes in at six, we're still safe. You know what I'm saying? So, based on earlier notification from the state of some of the grants that may be cut, until we get the final award, we're holding to like a 10% cut.
So if you could remind me, what is our process for developing the budget for next year? When do we start that process?
Uh, we, actually, we've begun already.
Okay.
You know, Mr. Henry, myself, we have met already a few times. So we'll be sending out a budget timeline. We just got the information this week from the city side.
Oh, good.
So we got our packet, our budget packet, and they have their timeline set. So then we will follow up, and we will be sending the board a timeline.
Okay, great. Any questions? Vice President Harvey.
Thank you. How you doing, Doreen?
Good. How are you?
Okay. I am going to just inform the commissioners that there was, and I think, Doreen, I think you started working on this as well, the, the crossing guards?
Yeah.
And there, they did not receive their increase that we voted on going back to...
I think, I think it should have been in the payroll today.
It's now. They got, yeah, they got it now.
Yeah.
Thank goodness. But this was going back to 2012? That they had not received their, their increase?
Their retro?
Their retro.
They should have gotten.
Okay. So I think that's been straightened out.
Yeah.
And thank you for, for doing that. Where would that come out? Where, where would we get that? Because they were supposed to receive it, they did not receive it. So where are we taking that to make sure that their whole...
Well, it will hit the, it will hit the crossing guard line.
Right. Okay.
So if there's any attrition within that line, that can probably, if there were some vacancies throughout, there'll be some attrition in that line, and I think we're, we'll be fine.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, we look forward to a great budget discussion.
I'll see a lot of you.
Thanks. Okay. Next is Title IV.
Linda Riddick-Barron.
Hi, Linda Riddick-Barron. How are you today?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here for a Title IV grant, which is a new grant. It really replaces some other grants that were eliminated. So it encovers Title II, which is a little technology, a little bit of innovative, and a little bit of safe school. It's a small grant. It covers public school, private school and community support. But we were able to get a little bit of everyone in the stakeholder part of this grant. And it's due next Friday, so I'd like to have permission to submit it, although you will probably vote on it on 21st.
I would, it would be helpful to me if I could have the breakdown of actually how it's, who's getting what money? Or is that there? I just see the total. Maybe I'm not seeing it correctly.
I can give you a, an idea.
Okay.
Because we got it late, so I had to give everybody until last Friday. I gave them like one week to get it together.
Okay.
But I can give you a breakdown that the private schools will get about 35% of it, and their ideas are, some of the things they did when we had to grant previously, which are IXL programs, some smart board training, some Google training, supplies that go along with Google training. And that's pretty much what four of those schools have asked for. For the public schools, we had to eliminate our, our PVA S monies, because that grant was eliminated. For the public schools, we had to eliminate our PVA S monies because that grant was eliminated. So this will bring that back. Which brings back to all the positive behavior supports for every public school.
Great.
For the community, Nogatuck Valley is asking for some support with their Oberbahnen program. Marion Merrill will ask for some support for the nine new school governors councils that she needs to increase. So this is perfect timing for her. There's a program called Wingman that we use for the K8 schools. And they have some requests that they asked this round for. And she did not have anywhere further funding for this. So we're, we're going to apply for it through this grant. I believe one of the magnet schools has a field trip coming up. And they did not have enough money to send the children to the, to the field trip. I think it's in April. So we're gonna try to submit it within this grant so that the students are not burdened with a $200, $250 expense on their own that they may not be able to support. And the bilingual program has several activities that they do with the parents. So we were hoping with the influx of families with the hurricane that we can double the efforts that are going on in that program. And lastly, to, to provide with some of our stakeholders when there is conferences for parent engagement, to be able to have more people in the community go to somebody's conferences when there's a fee to tie to it. So we're able to get, I think, a lot out of it with a little bit of money, so.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Thank you very much, Linda.
Thank you.
Okay. Darren Schwartz. This is a great opportunity with partnership with Northwest Regional Workforce Investment Board, Inc.
Thank you, good evening. We're looking to partner with the Northwest Regional Workforce Board to have a program that provides 40 students with pre-apprenticeship training, certification and placement manufacturing apprenticeship programs. This would include a 144-hour curriculum comprised of 72 hours using a program called Tooling U, 72 hours of pre-apprenticeship training. The program will consist of three cohorts, 15 students in 12th grade from the three comprehensive high schools in the spring. We also would like to do 10 students in the summer of 2018, primarily from the Waterbury Adult Education Program and other referral sources. And in the fall, we would like to pick students, 15 more students from Waterbury High Schools, specifically including Enlightenment School for that third cohort. There's two goals for the program, to establish a talent pipeline for the advanced manufacturing industry through this pre-apprenticeship training program, and to meet local employer needs by involving them in design and implementation of the program. So we're really excited to, to partner with this, with this, with this great organization. The way it would work is the, the monies would be delivered to the Waterbury Public Schools. We would use the monies for the, the pre-apprenticeship programs, the Tooling U program, and to hire a coordinator for career development that would oversee the program and ensure student success.
Wow, this is, this is a new initiative?
It is a new initiative. It's actually modeled off of East Hartford, has, has done something very similar. So I contacted Nate Cuesnel, the superintendent of East Hartford. He gave us the information of how they did it in their town. And we modeled our program very similarly, similarly to them.
Commissioner Hernandez.
Why not all the high schools? Just, why just the three comprehensive high schools?
Right now, the Career Academy already has a program up and running for career development. And the reason why Williams wasn't considered was because Williams is specifically to the arts magnets. And so many of those students are specifically going there because they're interested in the arts, not necessarily for career development. Because we only are targeting 40 students, we thought it better to target where the vast majority of Waterbury students were residing, which was the three comprehensives. And specifically Enlightenment School, where we've heard several times from Mr. Arroyo that he's interested in manufacturing for students. So that was the, the reason behind not going to Williams. And Career Academy is already taken care of through their programming.
Thank you. Commissioner Thierio.
Yeah, I think this is a great opportunity for us. Anytime we can offer our students vocational training is a plus-plus. Many of our students aren't gonna go to college. And this might be an introduction for them to get involved in the trades, especially in tool and die manufacturing, of which Waterbury was famous for over the years, especially during World War II. We were the brass capital of the world. And there were so many machine shops and, and Century Brass, and Scholes, and American Brass. We had so many opportunities in this town that it's, it's, it's reassuring to see that we might be opening another opportunity for our students. That being said, who would pay for the coordinator? Would this grant pay for the coordinator as well?
Correct. The $100,000 grant would spend the life of the program, which would end at the, at the conclusion of fall 2018, as of right now. And, and so the only in-kind services we would be providing as a school system would be trying to find a way to cover the cost of transportation for the 40 students, or 15 per cohort with that, that 10 being in one, for them to be able to get to like the mask center and, and things like that. But we have some creative ways that we might be able to partner with an organization or have bus tickets. We're still working out some of those kinks. But right now, the, the district using after-school busing and different items would be a minimal cost for us to get the students there.
Yeah, this is the kind of thing that we should pilot. Plant a seed, watch it grow, expand it, and, you know, put a little fertilizer on it and watch it really, really come to fruition. Because, you know, the thing that we're doing with our Career Academy in terms of Commissioner Sweeney, that I'm gonna give a lot of accolades and credit to, because I don't think that program or that school ever would've been built without her. I said this before, and I'll say it again. You know, she was the impetus behind that, you know? And now that we've done that and created our own equivalent of the vocational technical schools that the state has, and many of our kids apply and are not accepted. So now we have our own vocational school for our kids. And something that is very valuable as we, I think that as we see these kids start to graduate and we see them going out into the world of work, I think we're gonna be very thankful to Commissioner Sweeney for all the effort she put into that. Thank you.
Commissioner Adorno.
Hi, Mr. Schwartz, thank you, Madam President. Is there a minimum or maximum amount of students that can enroll?
We're looking for 15 in the spring, for this upcoming spring, 10 in the summer, and 15 in the fall. So that would be the maximum number of students that the grant could, could provide for. So it's 40 total.
So how do you choose if more than 15 apply? How do you pick?
That'd be a great problem to have. Let Kathy talk a little bit about that as she's associated.
Thank you. And when it does come time for a vote, I'll be abstaining. The way that we will select the students is, first of all, will be orientation sessions and information sessions to educate them of what the opportunity is. Then, based on the recommendation of a guidance counselor, and both an academic and a career readiness assessment based on an ability to succeed in the program, aptitude in manufacturing math, some type of practical aptitude in terms of the machining. There'll be recommendations, and we'll utilize the Career Navigator that we'll be bringing onboard to help select those students. So there will be, it would be great to, Mr. Schwartz, it would be great if we had a problem and we had to like pick kids. I'm hoping that that's the problem. But there is a plan for an assessment tool and an aptitude test, and then going from there.
Thank you. Thanks. Commissioner Hernandez.
Your coordinator, what background, what are you looking for? What exactly are their qualifications going to have to be in order to be considered for the coordinator?
Yeah, I have a mock-up job, job description right now. So we'd be looking obviously for somebody that has, at the minimum, a bachelor's degree, but with a master's degree preferred. Who has experience in working with the Department of Labor and/or has qualifications that are similar to this workforce in manufacturing. Experienced with private and public sector employees. Obviously experiencing working with high school students regarding either mentorship, guidance, or counseling. And so really looking for somebody that's a good communicator, that has college degrees, that has a background in understanding this type of work, either through the Department of Labor or other similar work, and has some experience working with students, and successful experience working with students.
Okay, thank you very much. Look forward to a successful program. Okay.
Just one, one more thing.
Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Thierio?
Yeah, in, in complimenting Commissioner Sweeney, I wanna compliment Commissioner Awad too for being very involved and instrumental in these programs. Because I think they are a huge success, not only in the city but in the state. So kudos to you also, Commissioner Awad.
I concur.
Thank you very much. Number seven, request approval of an agreement with All About Your Collaborative Healthcare Services, LLC to provide nursing services to students per their IEP. And you're not Melissa Baldwin, but...
No, Elaine Skoronsky from the Special Education Department. And Mrs. Baldwin sends her regrets. She's sorry she could not be here, but she's not feeling well. I'm in her place.
So if you just want to summarize the-
This is a contract for, let's see, three years. It's nursing services for a student. And I think that's really all it is. It's, it's based upon an hourly rate, a certain number of hours and days up to a certain point. And it's a three-year contract with an up-to amount of $210,760.
I think this has come before us, before this type of contract, but-
Yes, it has. This is not the only nursing vendor that we have.
Commissioner Adorno?
Hi, I just have a question. Do you know how many students you currently service that require those nursing services?
I don't know off the top of my head. I wouldn't think it would be that many.
Okay.
But I don't know exactly how many. I would think it would be maybe 10. But this kind of nursing service is much more intensive than nursing services that our children could have. We could have numerous students with just a slight amount of nursing service in their planner. But this is much more intensive for very, very ill children.
We can get that number though, specifically to you. And I believe this contract also includes being able to get Medicaid reimbursement for the costs associated with it.
Yes, we ask the vendors to fill out Medicaid information for us.
And what exactly, what type of services do they provide? For example?
Maybe feeding tubes, cleaning trays, things like that for very, very ill students who need almost constant care, or very intensive care throughout the whole day.
So that's not something that the typical school nurses would provide?
No.
Correct. It would be something they could provide.
This is more about the one-on-one students that require nursing.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Let's see, do you have any more? Number eight, request approval of amendment to the agreement with Charles F. Hayden School and Boys and Girls Village, Inc. for out-of-district student placements as required by their IEP.
Now, this is an amendment to a contract that we currently have. And it's a three-year contract, and we're requesting that the amount be increased in the contract by $223,000. And then it would obviously increase the total amount of the contract. The contract's a three-year contract, we're in the second year. This is an estimate, our best estimate. It does change, but on our best estimate, this is the amount of money that we'll need.
Is this, how many students are served by this contract? Or is this just one student?
Well, the increase could be caused by just one student, but there are other students potentially at that same school.
If we could get the exact number, I think that would be helpful.
If you would like, it was no problem.
Yeah, thank you. Any other questions? Commissioner Awad?
Just as a point of information, in the future, when we're putting items on like this, could we have the dollar value of the current contract as it exists in the dollar value that'll be amended to? So that we know what we're talking about in far as money, instead of just, just as amendments? So we don't know what we're at and where we're going to? If we could ask for, from a, just from a informational standpoint?
Certainly.
And that, and I don't mean just for you guys. I mean for any contract that we're amending for a dollar value? If we could have the current dollar value and the exist, and the new dollar value? So we would know what it is we're doing.
I think that would be helpful, because the total is here, but we don't really know what the increase was.
Right, well, we, in the letter to the, to the board, the increase is in the second to the last paragraph, 223,200.
Oh, okay.
And the total amount of the contract increased is 669,600. So you have to do a subtraction to find out what the original contract was. But I'm happy to make a, make it more clear. No problem.
Thank you.
Any other?
Okay, thank you. And let's see, are there any other contracts going through? Number nine, request approval of amendment to the agreement with the Gingras Center at University of St. Joseph for out-of-district student placements as required by their IEP.
This is the same situation as what we just spoke about for the other two contract amendments. We're requesting an increase.
Increase is 79,000.
And so it brings the contract three-year amount up by 79,000. This is a three-year contract, similar to the other ones. We're in the second year. So this also includes, we're coming in early for also next year. So hopefully we don't have to come back to even through next year on these.
Okay, thank you. And the next contract is request approval of amendment to the agreement with the Children's Center of Hamden Whitney Hall School for out-of-district student placements as required by their IEP.
This is another contract. It's a three-year contract. We're seeking to amend it. We're in the second year, by $228,058.20. We'll bring the total contract up by that amount to $456,116.40.
Okay, I think it's the same scenario that-
Same scenario.
Okay, so any questions on that? And then number 11, looks like the same thing. Request approval of amendment to the professional services agreement with Evergreen Center for out-of-district student placements as required by their IEP.
This is unique, because on this one, when we were looking at it, the amount of money for year 18, 19 was not included in the contract. So we added it in, and that's what the increase is requesting. It's actually the third year of the contract.
Is this an Aces school, Evergreen?
No, it's a private school.
Okay.
How much is the increase?
Yeah, go ahead, yep.
How much is the increase?
It's $145,016.50. And it's really not an increase so much as to make sure that the contract reflects the number of years of the term, the original term. And it was missing the last year.
Yeah, my question would be, why wasn't the third year included? Was it an oversight, or what happened there?
I don't know. I wasn't, I don't know exactly what happened. But it could've been that the term was odd. It was starting in the middle of the year before. But we caught the error, and we're in here to check, to fix this before next year.
I mean, these things are starting to add up, close to a million dollars here.
Yep.
You know? I know it's not your fault, but certainly need to be diligent in terms of costing out these contracts. And every time we turn around, we get a three-year contract, we're gonna increase the third year of the contract by over $100,000. Or take the third year of the contract that was left out, and increase that by $145,000. So I'm, I'm not the guru here. I don't have the answers, but I do have some questions.
I think that's gonna be part of our budget discussions, to look at our special education budget and see if we can get more money from the state.
I did wanna finish up with this, this question. Because I remember last year, one of the criticisms was during the budget process that we were spending a lot of money on students, student placement. And the amount of money in the budget was actually X amount of dollars. And the actual amount of money that we spent was far beyond that, millions beyond that. So this is not the first time this has happened, it's the second.
Commissioner Stango, then Commissioner Sweeney, and then Commissioner Adorno.
Thank you. Elaine, of those agenda items that we just covered, eight, nine, 10, and 11, are there any of-
any of them that are residential, or they...
The one that we're talking about right now, Evergreen.
That would be the Evergreen...
We don't pay the residential piece, but it's a residential placement.
Who pays the residential piece?
I think it's DCF, if I'm not mistaken.
Oh, okay. Okay, thank you.
But unfortunately, that's, and these, you know, Commissioner, are the most seriously involved students who require the most serious, you know, serious services, which we cannot provide. So I don't, and we have to provide these under law. So, and I think we're doing our very best to try to make sure students are in placements that are appropriate, and if they're ready to come back into school, we're bringing them back in. We're doing our very, very best. Certain schools may, might get more bang for a buck. We may want to have, so we can't just look at it with these six contracts. We'd have to pull them all together to get a really good picture of what we're doing. But I think you'd be pleased with our department. We're really trying.
Thank you.
Mr. Sweeney.
Evergreen Center, is that one student?
Yes.
And approximately, the other contracts, approximately, how many students are we up to now collectively?
One to two students probably per placement.
For each contract?
Yes.
One to two students?
One to, I should not take a guess. It would be best if...
Are the increases one to two, or the whole contract is?
The increases are one to two.
Two, okay.
You know, and one, I think, is a state placement that we can't avoid. You know, the student was placed there, and then we became the Nexus. So things happen to us without us even knowing. But I can get you the exact numbers. I've written that down. I'm happy to do it.
Okay. Commissioner Adorno?
Hi. So my question is, how are these centers or schools chosen? Is it parent requiring or recommending, or does it come from staff?
It comes from the students' PPT team, which is a team of professionals from the school. And you would know probably about the importance of that team. The team makes the decisions for the student. And what happens is, and the parent, of course, is on the team. And so the team gets together, and the first thing that they do is determine the needs of the students. And they determine what kinds of services the students need. They don't look at the school first. And then thereafter, once they realize what they've got to fulfill in the individual education plan, then they look to locations that would be a good fit for the student. And, you know, some of these places, you know, they decide whether they feel the student, they could service the student. So there's a lot of factors that are involved with picking the placement.
Right.
But it's a great question, so.
Thank you.
And I'd like to make a recommendation, only because it's been something that I continually learn about as I work with Ms. Skoronsky, Ms. Baldwin, who have done a fantastic job. Our out-of-district rate is about 2.4% of our special education population. Most districts our size. I don't think, I don't think there's another district our size that's under 10%. And so we, that's numbers I think we really should share with the board. The costs are, as some of you said, they're enormous costs, considering what we have in-house through some of our programming. We're able to keep some students in. Normally, we would ship them out to a different town, different location. And a lot of our parents tell us, if they can, they'd rather have their child stay in Waterbury. So we do try to provide those services. But I'd like to make a recommendation, because there's so much that goes into it through either a DCF placement, or a Nexus, or there's all these little intricacies. I think the board should have at least a small presentation on that, about how this kind of process works, because it is such a huge cost for the district, either maybe through the finance discussions or through a different presentation. I'd like to, I'd like to have Melissa come back and do that with her team, because it is...
It's complex.
Complex. But I think you'd also be pleased, as Ms. Skoronsky said, in terms of working with the parents and keeping students in-house as best as possible. We do excel at that.
I think that's a great idea. Thank you. Okay, and the next on the agenda is the request approval of a student intern affiliate agreement with Quinnipiac University. And this, again, is something we're familiar with. But for Commissioner Adorno, who might be new, just if you could just explain it briefly.
Sure. This is a contract to have an intern work in our district. The intern is a psychology student at Quinnipiac, and they requested through our Human Resources Department whether they could be placed in Waterbury. And so over the last few years, we've decided to have, we have written contracts now for interns. So this represents one of them. And the student would like to start in the next semester. And she, we have a psychologist in one of the schools that's willing to take that student on. So if we're able to get this contract passed, then we can then get the student to come in for next semester. We also have similar contracts to this with our, with social workers, with school counselors. We have a contract now with just about every state university. And now we're going into some private schools that have wanted to contract with us. But we're really doing well. At the beginning of the year, we had several contracts before you to bring in interns. So we're pleased with the way it's going.
We have a very robust, and the colleges love our school district, and we're very proud of the partnerships that we have. So, thank you. It's great. Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Hernandez.
This is just a comment, because I have my hand up, but the President didn't see it. Elaine...
We'll have to get you a fella.
I think we are all on this board pleased with what you, Melissa, and Wendy have been doing. So don't ever think that it doesn't go unnoticed.
Oh, thank you.
So, just so that you know.
It's a nice Christmas present. And also, also know that I understand that this is taxpayer money.
Right.
I understand that very well. And it's like my money. I'm not going to spend it easily on anybody. So please know that we're very careful with taxpayer dollars.
I think we know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate your time. Next on the committee is number thirteen, Committee on School Facilities and Grounds. Number fourteen, Committee on School Facilities and Grounds, use of school facilities by outside organizations. Any questions? And number fifteen is the superintendent's notification to the board. And is there, we do have an executive session this evening.
Can I just ask a question?
Sure.
Is Bob here behind me? I had a question as to how do we determine the rates of pay for different positions that are non-bargaining units, like the security guard, the security aide at adult ed? How did we determine the $20 an hour is what that guard should be paid, aide should be paid?
That's a question I can't answer tonight, but I will.
Okay.
I'll find out. I think it's based on what we have paid in the past, but I don't want to say that. I'm not sure.
Okay, if you could just, I just wondered how we come up with that.
Sure.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Okay.
Just under item fifteen, the Hurricane Relief Coordinator, I noticed that's been changed to a part-time position and not a full-time position, thereby not negating the Board of Alderman, the provision in the Board of Alderman's rules and regulations. Okay, thank you.
Great. We're in compliance. Thank you. Did I have a motion to go into executive session?
Motion to convene into executive session for discussion concerning the appointment, employment, performance evaluation, health, or dismissal of a public officer or employee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Waterbury Board of Education Special Meeting this evening. Excuse me. We'll begin with a silent prayer. Commissioner Hernandez, would you lead us in the pledge, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Commissioner Awad?
Here.
President Brown?
President.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Here.
Commissioner Serrano?
Here.
Commissioner Stango?
Here.
Commissioner Sweeney?
Here.
Commissioner Thierio?
Here.
What is that? President Brown? Here.
That's what you need, Winnie.
All right. Commissioner Sweeney.
Ladies and gentlemen, the Committee on Grievances recommends WTA grievance 16-17-39, heard by the committee on November 29, 2017, be sustained. The WTA and the district shall negotiate possible acceptance of the principal's resolution to the grievance. The district shall continue to make good faith efforts to provide resources for preparation periods.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries.
Ladies and gentlemen, the Committee on Grievances recommends WTA grievance 17-18-08, heard by the committee on November 29, 2017, be sustained. Teachers in grades six, seven, and eight shall be scheduled equal duty periods.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries.
Ladies and gentlemen, the Committee on Grievances recommends WTA grievance 17-18-09, heard by the committee on November 29, 2017, be sustained. Central office shall review scheduling and staffing.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries.
Ladies and gentlemen, the Committee on Grievances recommends WTA grievance 17-18-14, heard by the committee on November 29, 2017, be denied.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Okay. Before we adjourn, I would just, I was remiss earlier, Deputy Superintendent Henry was not able to be here tonight because he had a longstanding engagement at Yale University that he could not break. So thank you. Could I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.